And I neglected to mention at the top of the meeting that we have two changes in the agenda this evening. We will be canceling item number 12B, which is the 2025-2026 budget community input. Ms. Moore is out ill today and not able to present. Item number 10A, a public hearing for the 2025-2026 preliminary budget. Thank you for attending and for participating. The public may express their views on matters under consideration by the city council. Decisions will not be made until after the public has had the opportunity to share their views. This is a legislative action and common rules for legislative public hearings apply. Public hearings must be fair and free of conflicts of interest before we start the proceedings, and this also applies to me. Does any council member have any conflict of interest regarding the 25-26 budget? All right. This is how we will hold the hearing. As mayor, I will facilitate the hearing and the council deliberation. City staff will provide a summary of the matter at hand. The city council may ask for clarifying, may ask clarifying questions of staff. The public will be invited to share information on views you wish the city council to consider. Next, I will call for speakers from the public, first those on the sign up list, those located outside the chamber's entrance. After that, I will call for speakers joining the meeting remotely. Have any signed up for this evening? No. And then I will call for speakers present who have not signed up. The city council may ask clarifying questions of speakers about their testimony. However, this is not an opportunity for back and forth discussion or debate. I will invite city staff to offer clarifying information responsive to the public comments, and then I will close the public hearing. So the public hearing is now underway, and I will ask Finance Director, Finance Director, why am I spacing on names all of a sudden? Michelle Meyer, for goodness sakes. Woo! I didn't have my fruit snacks. It's been a long day. All right. Sorry about that, Director Meyer, who I met with just a couple hours ago. Could you please provide an overview of the topic at hand?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council. Please let me know if you can't hear me okay on this mic. I've been informed that I don't speak into it directly enough. As you know, every even-numbered year, we initiate a process. Council adopts a council, council adopts a calendar earlier in the year to set the process, the calendar for the biennial budget process for the upcoming two years. This is our first public hearing in the 25-26 budget process. At the September 9th meeting, we did review more detailed revenue and expenditure estimates for the general fund. The information included in your packet tonight is just a copy of the same memo that was included in that packet, the same revenue forecast that was included in that packet. And then this presentation has been updated with the same numbers, but just a little more overview information. The intent of this hearing, in accordance with the state of Washington and also with the Linwood City Code, is to really give the public an opportunity for early budget input for their budget priorities and a first glance at the anticipated property tax levy. A lot of this information will be very familiar from what we went through on September 9th. Just to, all we're going to really focus on tonight is general fund because that is our one property tax-funded fund. Right now, as it stands, the overview for the general fund, consistent with what you saw on September 9th, has 1.152.2 million total estimated biennial revenues for the biennium, and then 156.1 million total estimated expenditures. We are still working on these numbers. Before we come forward to you, on October 14th, we will have again revised the forecast, the revenue estimates. Every month, we have more actuals for 2024. We have more information about what our contracts will cost for 2025. We will continue to update that as we go forward. This information is just a graphic representation of the information in your packet from last week and also from this week. This is just a picture that really shows where our revenues in the general fund come from. Most of it is from sales tax. Forty-six percent of the revenues in the general fund for the biennium are anticipated to come from sales tax. That does include a 5.6 rate of growth for 2025 and 4% for 2026. Fines are at 12%. Utility taxes and franchise fees, 10%. Property tax at 9% as our fourth source of revenue. Development charges, 7%. Recreation, 6%. And then just a little bit from things like licenses and fees and charges for service and other intergovernmental revenue. Admissions tax is so small, it kind of blended into sales tax there. Our sales tax being the largest revenue, we do have a 10.6% sales tax rate in Linwood. We do want to educate everybody that the majority of that does not go to the city of Linwood, even though that is our biggest source of revenue. The state of Washington gets 61.3 cents of every dollar you spend. So even though it's 10.6 cents for every dollar of that, it breaks down to 61.3 cents for the state. Sound transit gets 13.2. Community transit gets 11.3. And then the city gets 9.4 for the city as a whole. That's what goes into the general fund. And then there is a 1-cent transportation fee that goes into our Transportation Benefit District Fund that only funds transportation improvements. And then the county gets the remaining 3.8 cents. Property tax, again, that's really the intent of this early hearing, but it's such a small source of revenue for us. But we absolutely want the residents that pay this tax to know what we're anticipating for the upcoming year. Property tax does have to be set every year, even though we're talking about a biennial budget. So for 2025, what we are anticipating, the current forecast that we're running, is to get a rate back up to 57 cents. You can see on that chart that from 2018 to 2020, the city was levying what equated to a rate of about 57 cents for the average homeowner. We set the amount. We don't set the rate. The county backs into the rate. But based on the preliminary assessed valuations, what we are anticipating is a levy of 6.2 million for 2025 that would then equate to a rate of 57 cents. The intent is to raise that levy back to the amount really pre-COVID. Council was very conservative when we hit COVID, kept the levy intentionally low because of everything else going on in the economy. But as assessed valuation has continued to climb and we've kept that levy amount low, the rate has fallen. So we'd like to get that rate back up to fund services that have actually already been added. That is, that equates to about an average of $84 annually for an increase for the average homeowner, $7 a month. So right now, based on the 2024 average property value of about 613,000, the average homeowner in Linwood pays about $278 a year. That comes to the city in their property tax levy. If we assume that the home values are going to go up about 3% for next year, which we don't know that for sure yet, that would increase their property tax bill for the city to about $362 for the year. This is just a breakdown of where your property tax bill goes overall. About 6% of that amount comes to the city of Linwood. The average homeowner in Linwood pays about $5,000 a year in property tax, and under $300 of that is what comes back to the city to fund all the direct services we provide like law enforcement, development services, parks and recreation, and all of those other internal services we have. The majority goes to the state and the school district, or school district and the state, I should say. Our general fund expenditures, our operating departments are 100, almost 144 million out of the biennial total. We transfer to the street operations fund for accounting. We keep that separate. However, streets really are expected to be general fund-supported. We have some fuel tax dollars that goes in there, but the rest of that is typically made up from general fund and then transfers in from our TBD fund. We have focused on increasing that over this biennium because that amount has stayed really stagnant over prior years, and nothing in the street operations fund is getting any cheaper. So we have focused on trying to increase that from 2.1 million in the current biennium to 3.25 million over the next two years. And then we have transfers to debt service that we are also legally responsible for out of the general fund. A 5.7 million for the Community Justice Center construction, and then 3.1 million for the Recreation Center bonds. This is just a graphic, pie chart representation of the breakdown for expenses. What's interesting, if you kind of line up the revenues and expenditures, our largest source of revenue, a sales tax, is 46%. Our largest expense is police at 43%. Our second largest, Parks and Rec, at 14%, is really close to our, I think it's our fines and fees amount that we bring in in revenues. DBS, 10% of the expenditures. Debt service at 6%. We got finance at 5, which also includes utility billing. And then Public Works Administration, Engineering, IT, Court, Exec, Streets. It goes down to HR, and then our fire service contract is also in there. As mentioned at the September 9th meeting, the priority for this biennium is to really find a way to fund the things that have already been added when services were increased without additional revenues coming in. And so, in accordance with the council priorities that were identified earlier this year, I think it was earlier this year, maybe last year, we have found in this draft of the budget, we have permanently funded 10 police officer positions, four custody officers, four master custody officers, and 1.5 custodial positions for the Community Justice Center. One court martial position and an additional legal clerk position were added for municipal court, and then the additional maintenance worker for streets. Again, these were all already added by council through formal action. This is just incorporating them into the budget going forward. The park expansion and improvement priority that council have had, has, we have had a senior park planner position for quite a few years now. It was funded out of a capital fund, and that's really not a place that we need to keep personnel. Personnel should be funded out of operating funds, not capital funds. So consistent with how we treat our planner positions in public works, we moved that position into the general fund for 25-26. And then for health and mental health services, we have incorporated the contract medical services for the Community Justice Center into the Police Department Corrections Budget. There are a few things still not in the budget. This has not changed since the, we reviewed this on September 9th. We currently have two grant-funded maintenance workers for graffiti remediation. They were funded by our ARPA grant. They do not have permanent funding yet for 25-26. We also have one full-time human services coordinator position funded by ARPA currently. Again, that, that funding expires at the end of 2024, and that position is not yet in the 25-26 budget. There are no other requests for additional funding reflected in the budget currently. There are a list of them that departments have put together. They are just not in the budget yet. So those will come forward to council separately for review. We'll keep looking at the numbers and be back to you on October 14th with, oh, before I skip to that real quick, in the packet is the same copy of the general fund forecast that was in there for September 9th. It did reflect that we are going out of compliance with our own minimum fund balance policy that says we have to have a 2.5-month operating reserve in the general fund. We're focusing really hard on keeping 25-26 in the black and in compliance with that forecast or in compliance with that policy. The current version does show going out of compliance, 27 to 29. We'll continue to work on that. This is what we will come forward with on October 14th. The mayor will present her message, her budget message, and then you will have that entire book. That includes general government funds, debt service funds, internal service funds, enterprise funds, and capital funds. And the remaining calendar, kick that off October 14th, and then through November 4th, you will hear from departments individually. And then November 12th will be the next public hearing. That'll be for property tax and for the preliminary budget, additional budget deliberation that night, November 18th if needed, and then the planned adoption of the property tax levy and the budget for November 15th. The city council does have to adopt the property tax levy that night. It has to be certified to the county council by November 30th, or else we collect nothing. So I can turn it over to the public unless there's any questions before.
All right. We'll move forward. Does any member of city council have a question to clarify information provided during the staff presentation? And Councilmember Alton Ronno Crosby is first on that list.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Again, I have a question, brainstorming. So the human services coordinator is going to be funded by the general fund or the operating fund?
It would be general funded. Would be the intent, yes.
And it's going to be like the biennial, and then again, every two years, we can look at it, or how it's going to, how we can manage that?
It's really up to council. Once it's included in the general fund, it's considered to be a permanent position unless council's action states otherwise that it's just temporarily created. The position as it stands now, when it was advertised, when it was created, it was as a temporary position through the end of 2024. If we can fit that into the general fund budget, the expectation would be that it would be a permanent position unless council deems otherwise.
Well, I just throw an advocate for that position. They change the, you know, transition and for permanent because it's a need in our community through mental health and everything. So, and Kyle is doing an amazing, an amazing job. So, thank you.
Councilmember Binda.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Brazil. I just have two questions, Director Meyer. One, they both have to do with the transferred debt services. One, for the 3.1 million going towards for the Recreation Center bonds, is that for the current state of the Recreation Center, or is that for a future? I know there was talks about maybe, you know, updating it and doing some other things to that. What is that towards exactly?
This is all the old money. This is for the construction bonds that were issued initially issued in 2012, and then we just refunded them last year. But it's, it's the old money. It's not new money for any new improvements. It's just paying off what we already have.
Do you know how much we owe on that?
That one, no. Not off the top of my head. But I can get you that really easily.
Yeah, I'm just curious. And then my second question, as to do with the 5.7 million for the Community Justice Center, is that going towards the $60 million on there? Is that going to be an annual thing or biannual thing, or is that a one-time payment we're making right now?
Oh, this is every year, we're paying on this for the next, I think, 29 years. It was a 30-year bond that was issued. The amounts, because of the state of the market when the bond was issued, the amounts do fluctuate a little bit. The amounts fluctuate a little bit every year, but it's pretty close to about this amount every biennium.
Thank you. Council President Hearst.
Thank you. Can we go to slide two, please? That one. So I was just looking, I was looking at, just comparing our last budget, based on the financial forecast figures you'd given us. I just want a general overview for our 23-24 budget. Our revenues were, or estimated, since 24 is not done yet, 127.5 million. And, and now we have estimated biennial revenue of 152.2. And then our expenditures for 23-24, according to the forecast, were 128.5 million, and now we're at 156.1 million. So what, I just was, could you kind of give a general idea of what's driving those increases, both on revenue and expenditures?
Yes, quick question. Is that coming from the forecast?
Yeah.
Okay. The forecast has the 2023 actuals and then the 2024 estimates, which are much lower than the actual adopted budget because we've been running so low in the police department due to their vacancies and the jail not being fully open yet. We're low on both revenue and expense related to the jail. And then also, we've got low expenditures related to development business services having a high number of vacancies. So I just want to pull up the budget real quick to give you an apples to apples. It just takes a minute to open. Okay. The, sorry. The adopted budget for general fund for 23-24, I should say the amended budget for 23-24 for general fund, revenues 131 million, and then expenditures were 133. So it's just a little different than what's in the forecast right now. The short answer is that nothing got cheaper. There have been new labor contracts recently approved that are reflected in the next biennial budget. There's, really, every contract we have has gotten more expensive. Liability insurance has quadrupled since that budget was initially adopted in 23-24, at least tripled. Maybe I'm exaggerating. The jail medical contract was just included at the end of 2023, after a budget amendment was done, and now you have two full years of that contract in there. That is a large amount. The full operations of that facility are now in the budget, and they were not in 23-24. And that's a big part of that.
Okay.
Debt service also, those amounts are in there now for two full years, although that shouldn't have changed too much. But I can, I can get you a more specific answer after having a little time to look at it, but I will just say it's just because everything got more expensive.
Yeah. As, as far as the expenditures, the largest portion are salaries and benefits of employees, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. And then if we could go to slide, slide nine. And you had this in the memo, and I think last time I asked if we could have dollar figures for that, and I still
Yes, you did.
Would ask that. Perhaps for our next presentation would be awesome. But if you go to the, to the next slide. So my question is, I know that the public safety positions of two maintenance workers and the human services coordinator, we say that those were temporary funded by ARPA, but it's also true that of the 10 police officers we funded, five were from ARPA funding. Is that not correct?
Yes, five were ARPA-funded. However, if you go back to the meeting, when those positions were created, council specifically said that they were permanent positions that would need to be included in future budgets.
Okay. But you don't recall us saying that as far as the human services coordinator?
No. Those were just ARPA-funded through 2024.
Okay.
And they were advertised accordingly when the positions were posted.
Okay, all right. Because I, I will join with Council Vice President advocating that we find money for that. And then lastly, you know what? I think you've done it. I appreciate the, the overview and look forward to a month and a half of presentations.
Real quick, I do have numbers here for this I can give you. The 10 police officers, that's about 1.625 million for the, per year. The four custody officers, custody officers, about 863,000 for the biennium. The building and property services position, 237,000 for the 1.5 positions. The, skipped around. The four master custody officers, 929,000 for the biennium. Court martial, 300,000 for the biennium. The maintenance worker for streets, I don't have that one filled in.
Okay.
And then I don't have the park expansion one handy because that wasn't new. And the, where is that? Human services is about 302,000 dollars. Oops, wrong slide.
How about the mental, health and mental services for the
The jail, I want to say it's about $4 million for the biennium.
Okay.
I think I have that one right here, too. I'm sorry, 1.2 million. No, 4 million. The lines, the lines are really tight. Jail, jail medical, about 4.1 million.
4.1.
Yes.
Just a reminder to council that we'll have time to dig into each of these departments over the next couple of months. We'll spend lots of time doing that.
While I'm looking at this, just for, the liability insurance increase was 1.4 million just for the biennium, and that was after a million-dollar increase last biennium.
Okay, thank you.
All right. A few more questions from council members. Councilmember Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. We'll see some more of this Tax Advisory Council coming up here shortly. You had a slide there that on the same page showed forecast revenue and forecast expenditure. There we go. So our two-year revenue is estimated to be 152 million dollars. Our two-year expenditure is estimated to be 156 million dollars. So if I'm reading that correctly, we're forecasting a deficit of $4 million between our revenue and our expenditures over that two-year period. Is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
And we're expecting that that will be covered by an increase in the fund balance and savings from this year.
To keep us in compliance with the fund balance policy, it's really the same thing that was done when the 23-24 budget was adopted in 2022, where we're not increasing revenues enough to what we would call balance the expenditures in full. The intent is to draw down the fund balance that is in excess of that 2.5 million dollars of operating reserve.
Seems like we have a long ways to go. This is, as you mentioned, without the mental health
Correct.
And without the two individuals we hired to help us combat graffiti, which is basically rampant in the city right now. So we would be lacking those. There are also, there were four additional, there were some more wants, some more things that were asked but aren't yet part of the budget, correct?
Correct.
What's the total annual for those asks at this point? So these are important things that departments have brought forward and said, hey, in order to run my department well and help the city provide the services we want, I need this or that.
We have not finalized these amounts with departments yet for council presentation, but the numbers that we have currently are about a million dollars.
Total for those, for all of that?
Yes.
Per year?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. That's a million dollars for the street fund. General fund, 3.3 million.
Per year?
For biennium.
3.3, so 1.5, 1.6 per year. So this slide, we're looking at about a $4 million shortfall, and if we were able to give what the departments are saying they need, that's another 1.3. On top of that, we have the mental health, and then potentially the two maintenance workers to combat graffiti, which I'm sure is going to $500,000, $600,000.
625 for those two for the biennium.
625. So we got to be at least five or six million dollar deficits over two years, just the way things are penciling out right now. If we were able to add in those things that have been brought to us and the things that you're considering. All right, well, we are a long ways behind. We're going to have to figure out how we make this work without driving the citizens and residents of Linwood into the poorhouse with taxes. Thank you.
Councilmember Parshall.
Thank you for being here, Director Meyer. I do realize this is just an overview, and I appreciate the mayor reminding of us of that. We have some eager council members tonight, I think, on the budget. I do wanted to ask a similar question to Councilmember Decker because the, the fund balance compliance kind of went by quickly because this is an overview. Can you dig into a little more detail on what it means to be in compliance versus out of compliance on the fund balance? And then I believe you also mentioned there's the potential of being out of compliance for the next biennium budget, and what would that, because we have to think about now and also the future, what, what might that mean for the following budget after this one?
So just a high-level overview on the policy. It is, this is standard practice for most cities. It's a best practice. It's in accordance with the government finance officer's recommendation. The state auditor looks at this. Every time we go out and we get rated for a bond issuance or a bond refinance, they do look at this policy, they look at our compliance with this. Every year, this is recalculated. So every year, when the prior year ends, you look at the total operating expenses for the general fund, you multiply that amount by two and a half, and that, divide by 12, then multiply by two and a half to get a two-and-a-half-month operating fund balance. So basically, whatever it costs you to operate two-and-a-half months of the prior year you're you to operate two and a half months of the prior year, you have to have that amount still remaining in your fund balance at the end of the current year to be in compliance with this policy. I will back up real quick and tell you that the way the city made it through in two thousand and twenty was having this reserve in place and being able to draw it down as needed. It did take council action to actually draw it down to be under compliance. And you took action to go right back into compliance in two thousand and twenty-one and get it restored. So we really, I would say, for twenty-five, twenty-six, as, as mentioned, we're looking at taking in less than we're spending, which is not a sustainable practice in the long term. That's what we've done for twenty-three, twenty-four. Can't do it very much longer. That's why we're trying to increase some of the revenues. As mentioned, this budget does have some pretty optimistic revenue assumptions in there for sales tax, for development revenues, for fines and fees, really all related to the growth that we're expecting related to sound transit, light rail opening, and if you build it, it will come mentality that this will drive sales and activity in the region. So what it means is if we do not adopt a budget that's in compliance with that, we either have to cut expenditures or raise revenue somewhere else, or do a combination of the two, which means we can adopt a budget that's in compliance. If it doesn't trend accordingly, then we have to take action throughout that year, especially during the mid-biennium amendment then, to either reduce services or increase revenues. And then for future years in the forecast, it's fine for us right now to adopt a two-year budget that has a forecast that shows us going into the red based on a lot of assumptions, because that forecast really is just based on assumptions. But it doesn't mean that when that time rolls around that we can operate that way. We will have to take action for that biennial budget and for that upcoming year, that upcoming property tax levy, to make sure that that budget is balanced when it's adopted. And it's in compliance with that policy going forward.
So as the fund balance gets drawn down, is it safe to say that potentially that gap between our revenue and expenses gets larger over time?
It means we can't cover it in
Okay, thank you. That's actually a good answer to my question, also.
And the more we spend every year, the more that that minimum policy, that minimum fund balance policy increases. So that minimum amount increases annually or biennially as the amount that we're spending goes up. So the more, the more expensive it gets to operate, the higher that balance has to be.
Thank you.
All right. I'll ask the two council members that have not spoken yet, if you have any questions. There'll be an opportunity after the public hearing to ask more questions. Good to go. Good to go. Okay, we're gonna, I, I would like to call on the public since it's a public hearing.
Do that.
Who, who have not spoken yet. Well, council president Hearst, I show that you have spoken during this time, but if we want to have our public wait some more, I'll continue to call on council.
Thank you. Because this is the time when council gets to ask questions of what has been presented. And, and really, to say that, you know, people are over eager to talk about the budget, I would tell this council, this is gonna be the most important decision we make this year. And if we don't start asking questions and set, you know, some of the things forward that we want answers for, we're not doing our job. And so the only thing I would say is, I would like to go back to the slide on the property tax.
There were a few of them.
One more where it says that one. So, so this budget has a property tax set at six point two million for, for twenty-five and six point seven million for twenty-six. And I would just point out that that is an increase of almost twenty-four percent from the property tax that we assessed in twenty-four. And it'll be thirty percent in twenty-six based on twenty-four. So it's, it's again, things I want to bring forward for the council to be aware of as we go through all these presentations. If that's something that council wishes to proceed with, that's great. But it's, when we start talking about levy rates, it's inventorial. What we need to look at is what we are assessing as a budget amount for the property tax levy. So it's a, it's a dollar figure. It's not a levy rate that we need to look at. That's all. And, and really, I would point out, this is the first public hearing, correct? We don't have another public hearing until November on this budget. So it is an opportunity for both the council and the public to start asking questions. Thank you.
Council member Bendo would also like to ask another question.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Brazil. I just wanted to know, in terms of our funding for existing services, how much leeway do we have with certain positions? I want to know, are all these positions on here, are they mandatory in a way where we're saying they're already in our budget, this is what we're funding? There's no leeway in that? There's none of those positions that are that?
No, it's, the council, this is the council's budget. So staff works with the mayor to prepare the budget. The mayor brings the budget forward, but it's council that adopts this budget, that is council's budget. The positions that have been added before this budget year were added by the council. So if there are services that the council wants to reduce in order to have a reduction in expenditures, that's absolutely the council's authority to do so before adopting the budget.
And so, and I just want to make sure on here, when we say one court martial, one legal clerk position, that's an additional, right? That's not what they already have.
That's They already have them because council already took action to add those. All of those positions were ones that council has, has added between two thousand and twenty-two and year-to-date in two thousand and twenty-four. They just didn't have revenue backing them up.
And I, I guess the reason I ask this is because I know, I mean, I've recently gone to the courts and seen how backed up they are in some of the work that they have there because of positions and all of that. And so I'm curious, let's say if we wanted to fund any more positions potentially help out, would that be possible if we wanted to find a way to work that in our budget?
It's absolutely possible. We will be bringing forward that list of requests for additional funding. We will also bring forward information for council so you can equate those changes to additional revenue sources or just the dollar amount if there's, you know, a desire to find a reduction in other services in order to find, to fund those. We have just a few ways that we can increase revenues, so we'll bring you that information as well.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other council questions? All right, we'll get to the public now.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. First on the list, I have Ted Heikal.
Ted Heikal, nine-eight-zero-three-six. Where do I start? First, I would suggest that in the presentation that you will get, since it's not going to be on tonight, about the budget survey, that you have the pages numbered. They are not numbered what is on tonight's agenda.
We, we already adjusted the agenda. Ms. Moore is out ill today and not able to
I understand that. I understand you said that. Number two, I would say, I hardly heard anything that the finance director said, whether it's my ears or whatever. I hear all of you up there, but I could not understand most of what she said. So where do we begin? Well, let's go to those police officers. Five police officers funded by the ARPA, ARPA funds, one-time funding for ongoing positions. Number one, big mistake. I can tell you, the first mayor I served with was Herc Hurdleka. Mayor Hurdleka would never have brought this to you because it may not be in balance when he gives it to you. But it's so far out of whack, what you have tonight. You're gonna do a lot of work between now and November to try to figure out how you get through this. And for God's sakes, don't just take money out of the reserves. We have a six million dollar, we used to call it rainy day fund, revenue stabilization fund. No money has been put in the revenue stabilization fund in the last ten years. So it hasn't grown. It has stayed, stayed there. And your costs of doing business every year has gone up, but you've never put more money into the revenue stabilization fund. Why? Total budget expenditures currently in the biennium, one hundred and eighteen point four million. That includes estimates for the rest of this year. But your new budget that has been given to you has a hundred and forty-three million, twenty-five million dollars more. How do you get another twenty-five million dollars into a, a city budget? Well, let's see. Executive department, it's up almost a million. HR department, up half a million. IT budget, up one million. Legal, up a half a million. Courts, up a million. Of course, I can't fund, I can't say enough about the courts because they produce more revenue than virtually anything else for every dollar spent. Park and recreation, a million. Police department, sixteen million. And again, that is because we're gonna staff the jail and hopefully get money coming in, but it's not gonna balance out that sixteen million dollars. And public works, eight million? Is that what I see? And of course, who doesn't get any money? Oh yeah, it's the lifeguards. Take a look at the lifeguard's schedule of fees, of payments. They start crossing off numbers because the state law won't allow them to pay that little. Do they then move it all down and say, okay, everybody else gets six steps, but lifeguards don't. They're down to only three steps in their pay scale. What's wrong with lifeguards? These lifeguards can make more money working at McDonald's than they can life-saving people at our pools. Something's really out of whack. Will you be sure to look at the schedule of, of the employees and find out why they keep marking off numbers on their pay scale because the state won't allow them to pay that little? But they never readjust it so that there's an opportunity for those people to have a, a full six or seven steps in their pay. Fines and forfeitures, and we know from what we've been told before, eighty, eighty-five percent of the people who are paying those fines and forfeitures don't live in Linwood. We're soaking the people who come in here to shop or to eat or whatever, and they make a mistake in traffic. So our suspected fines and forfeitures are going from ten point two million to seventeen million. Almost seven million dollars more that we're gonna get from these folks? I know that probably includes the extra twenty-five dollars you guys put on the, the tickets when they come here, and that's supposed to help pay for the police officers. I don't know, maybe that's why the seven million dollars can pay for all those officers. Maybe that's the, the theory. I, I don't think it's very good business sense. Property tax. I think we're gonna have, hear a lot of talk about property tax in the next two months. To go from nine point two-five million to twelve point nine million in the Utility tax, fourteen million. Of course, that includes an extra bit of money that we have to put in because the twenty-plus percent increase in the sewer rates that go in every year, I think it's this year, next year, and the next. It's four years in a row. It brings up the sewer fees over a hundred percent in those four years. So obviously, the six percent extra tax, utility tax that goes into the general fund will also increase a hundred percent over those four years. One thing that I would ask you to do, in the next two months, you'll be hearing from every department director, either standing at this podium or sitting at one of these desks, and telling you how great their departments are. And we love the departments, and we love the department directors. Not two hundred thousand dollars a year, much love. I think you want to look at where people are, are paying a lot of money more than they probably should. You've got department directors, virtually every one of them, is making over two hundred thousand dollars a year, when the person who lives in the city is feeling lucky to make sixty-five thousand dollars a year. And that's for a family. Sometimes that's two people working. You've got to take that into consideration. But when you have these gentlemen here, standing in front of you, sitting in front of you, ask them one question and make sure they answer it. What have you cut from your department that you did last year or the last two years that you're not going to do for the next two years? Not everything works. And you have to say, in, in business, and I was in business a long time, when you have something that doesn't work right, that's not producing the effect that you wanted it to, you don't keep doing it. You stop doing it and try something else. So what are they gonna cut out of their budgets? That's an important question. I hope you get answers from them. And I will leave the podium now. Hopefully, other people will speak. I may be back.
Jason Moore.
Jason Moore, nine-eight-zero-three-six. We just had one of the mayor's staff in here today for one of the proclamations, Mr. Railford, I believe that's how you pronounce it. We would like to know, what does he actually do? Does he just show up to the fairs and to the coordinate with school districts, you know, and show up for proclamations? What, what does he do? Because I heard that he makes a lot of money, and this is a perfect example on, you know, how the city could better use their money. I mean, is this guy at the city to tell the city employees how they should be, you know, woke or what? Expenses, thirty-four percent to the police department. And I'm confused at what this whole new construction with this police department is actually for. They, the city has spent a lot of money on this. And if we're investing all this money into this new project with these community health center involved with the police department, shouldn't we fill the police officer positions first before we start actually, you know, adding in services? And I believe a lot of these services are already available elsewhere, you know, the county and the state. I'm, I'm sure they could hand out num, there's a lot of places that people can already get services. So why should we face the burden when we're already missing police officers? Crime is out of control, just like one of the council members said, assault weapons at the schools. So what is going on here? Minimum balance out of compliance. See, this, I believe the council missed out on a great opportunity because before she left, Shirley Sutton requested, she motioned, that the city do an audit and find out where is all of this money going? Because we just had a perfect example here. The staff comes and presents to you guys, where do these numbers come from? Councilman Decker, you know, he just showed us how they can't even show us accurate numbers. Why don't they show us accurate numbers that actually reflects what's going on here instead of trying to, are they pulling a fast one on us? Admin school district, they're getting thirty-five percent of our property taxes. They need to show us results. If they are getting so much of our money, the city needs to hold them accountable for their failures. The students can't even do math, writing, science. The scores are abysmal. They're less than failing. Crime is on the rise. There's assaults at these schools all the time. We need to hold them accountable. If they're not gonna give us good results, they shouldn't be getting more and more and more of our money every more of our money every year. Human Services. $300,000 for Human Services. What do we need these Human Services for? Crime is on the rise. We need the police officers, all of the police officers in those positions, to hold these people accountable. These criminals get arrested, if they even get arrested, they end up right up back on the street. How in the world is social services going to help this problem? So yes, I agree with Mr. Hinkle. What are these people going to cut from their budget? Us citizens, our families, we have our own budgets. Maybe these staff members, they forget what it's like because they're living fat on their salaries, paid for by us. We don't have that luxury. We are struggling. How are we going to pay more taxes? So these people, these staff, they need to cut their departments. You can't just keep raising taxes, raising fees, more and more fees. They need to cut stuff. They need cuts. If it's not working, cut it. And if you can't figure out what's working, investigate it, audit it. We need action here, not fast ones pulled on us.
Are there others in the audience that would like to speak? Mario Lotmore.
Hi, Mario Lotmore, Linwood Times, Linwood 98087. I just first like to start off, I've, I've worked with Michelle Meyer from MuckelTO. She's been really good. She did MuckelTO well, left us in a good shape, so I'm pretty confident that she's going to do a good job for this biennial budget, this time around. So I have a few questions in which I'm going to not go through all of them here, but I'm probably going to send Michelle an email, which she probably could just quickly, she said what some of those numbers were, but she probably could just supplement this easily with an email. But one thing I had was the CJC bonds, does that include the recovery center as well, the expense there? And I knew that Councilman Binda was saying around 60 million, but it's actually gone up. It's like every, recall, you keep increasing the bond amount. So actually, I'm curious on how much total in bonds, or just total amount for, in bonds that have been issued for the CJC, because I think it's probably closer to 80, somewhere on the 70s, 80s, okay? Million. Also, I'd like to know the percent of debt services to revenues. It looks pretty small, so I don't think that'd be too much of an issue. My glasses are getting old. Oh, also, I think that this was mentioned, but in the biennial budget proposed by the mayor, does that include all the collective bargaining that was just approved? Okay, good, good. Thanks, I thought. ARPA, you already answered that. Oh, one question I like, I have here, maybe a council could find this out when Linwood Police Department speaks. But how many vacancies does LPD project by the end of this year? How much of that unused money is expected to be brought forward in 2025? Because that's an opportunity there. And how much are they, how many police that they are really expecting to fill in those vacancies? Because that's kind of fact that they keep, where they kind of pull money from, like, where did they get that money from? Just heads up, council. But that could be opportunity there to cover some of that deficit. So if they're only projecting, if they say they need 80 people, but they're going to get 75, well, that's five extra heads they're holding on their budget, which you could pay for, or something, allocate somewhere else. Reduced Services. So I'm hearing that option a lot. I don't think we necessarily have to reduce services, but, I mean, you guys know best. Actually, the mayor technically and her staff would know best. But one thing I noticed in the survey that was on the agenda to talk about today, was that there was no option there to, about reducing costs. Or even to see if there's a way that you feel the city could work better. It was like, do you feel that we should reduce services? Do you feel you should pay more? It was that one, one question there. And I was like, well, there's no question there saying, can you work smarter, not harder? So I think that that, in the survey itself, was kind of misleading. So just wanted to mention that. Also, it'll be nice if we can find out, I'm assuming that the city is going to, and this could be clarified using traditional budgeting, maybe they could consider zero-based budgeting, which is similar to what perhaps Heikal, sorry, I don't want to cross-talk, but one of the residents were saying, that it's taking more of a zero-sum approach to just justify that those, that it is exactly, like, the line item itself is still needed for that particular department. So I just, I'm hoping that the mayor could, and her staff could bring, when they speak to, or speak to the council, probably cost-reduction opportunities within each department, that at least gives some confidence that the directors are at least looking on how they could work a little bit more efficient. And then, one thing that I'm curious about from planning, is if they can kind of present to the council, what percentage of stagnant commercial real estate or zone properties that are, that are commercial that they have, and how they could generate that into turning revenue? Because that could also prevent, create, sorry, reduce that gap. So in other words, you have property just stagnant, sitting there, zone commercial, what are they doing to outreach to try and get developers to develop that property? Let's see. And then, for, I guess, some clarification on the deficit spending. I didn't really get that, because the mic did cut out at that point, so I didn't hear that, so I'm going to have to listen. But I kind of want to know why we're going through deficit spending this year, or proposed deficit spending this year, sorry. Let's see. I think that, focus on this important, okay? I think that's, that's it. That's all I had, but overall, thank you.
Thank you. Are there others in the room that would have questions to ask?
Elizabeth Lunsford, 98037. And I heard that with the mispronunciation, you didn't take your fruit snacks. And I am a mom, so I always have fruit snacks, so if you need that for later.
I appreciate that very much.
You're welcome. This is a new thing for me. I talk here, so you're going to need your fruit snacks. I have more snacks as I go on. A few things. Property Tax. For nationwide, for what Linwood has amenities, our property taxes are extremely low. We have a bargain for property taxes. And I know that sounds hard to hear, it goes, no taxes, no taxes. But the thing is, the amenities that we have here weren't always here. It is a very new city, for the most part. So even though I think raising property taxes would be good, and needed, and overdue, I think of the seniors who invested to have their retirement here, and they would have no idea to, their foresight of what Linwood has become, especially Winlinwood. So even if that increase to 5.3 seems minimum, it will literally price a lot of our seniors out and put a strong burden on them. There's a lot of seniors who are getting jobs because they can't afford these taxes, and with healthcare. So something that I propose, because that's, now that is maybe getting a transitional staff to help them with their fees. A lot of them are not connected to resources, to help with funds and refi fees and whatnot. And we can get that data of who it is, because we can just look at who's been property owners for over 25 years, and we can send them a personalized email, hey, we're about to increase our taxes. If you need help, please see so-and-so, to help them guide in the need, because, at least make that offer. Not a lot of them want to get extra help. The seniors here in Linwood are hard-working, independent, amazing people. And so hopefully, pushing the blow investment, I am encouraging to help get these people, because I, it burdens, makes me sad, the burden that they have to go through with all this. The other thing that I would have to say is with the fair taxes, is looking for legislation, the cooperation, is what solutions can state representatives in states work, such as managing the high-density apartments? I think there's a lot of money that they have skipped through, especially out of, in, on a corporate snahomish, they still come here to our parks, that's on our tax dollars. So looking in more of a county and statewide of how Linwood is serving these people on our taxes, but the people are not, we're not getting taxes for them because they live outside city limits. So I think addressing that burden through legislation and county would be helpful. And again, that could be another position to get through. Lot of more ideas, but the biggest one, I would say, is this budget is new. And this narrative that somehow things are already preset is false. Community has not been engaged. It might not feel like it, but we're still dealing with the aftermath of the pandemic. People's health have gotten worse, resources to get worse, it is still a struggle out there. So saying that we have community involvement, first of all, the community has to know what's even about. And in the presentation, I'm very concerned about things that were not listed. I'm very concerned about the wastewater management system. That is a crisis that Linwood is going through, and I haven't heard much about it. So I feel that this is not at step one or zero. I feel what, right now, what I see, we're at negative five, with a strong push of these pre-ideas of this false narrative, that supposedly we need to have 20 new police employees? 20. 20. 20. How can 20 new police officers, or, excuse me, because I already worked the system, because I worked the system from last biennium, just be able to feel entitled to having that consistency? And it sucks if we can't fund those additional, those police officers are currently working, but that's reality. That is what us people feel like. We don't get every day committed to next-year salary. And I just look at the teachers, every cycle, they don't know if they have a job. So it's a difficult conversation, but those 20 positions, those are on the chopping block, even if you don't want a minute. They are on the 20 block. So change that narrative, because I'm getting really tired of it. Because there's departments here that have been neglected. And you know what? A lot of the departments won't speak up, and let's be honest. A lot of people don't feel safe working through this administration, because they're afraid they're going to lose their jobs. So even when they do come here, I'm afraid that they're not going to get the thing. I want you guys to be courageous and look what the needs are, because these departments are neglected, and the people who are speaking here have families to feed, and you need to give them the same type of opportunity and respect that you do to the police, and you don't. So that's what I'm saying, this is a new budget, new eyes, and look for the need of the people who are desperately needed, because we're feeling the consequences. Everyone is. And when I was saying the consequences, it all is related, because hardship at home, kids are taking it out on other kids. And the police are not going to solve that. Community's going to solve that. So I hope you guys work for the community and bring the voices to it, and stop this narrative that the police get whatever they want. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to make some comments? We're not going to do double comments. I'll ask that you hold your comments for a public time. We are getting late, and we've got a few more things on the agenda, so I will ask Director Meyer to provide any clarifying information in response to what we heard tonight, questions, if you'd like to respond to any of those.
I'll try to do this really quick before my laptop dies.
All right.
I did make some notes. If I gloss over something, if I miss it, I will follow up in an email. Just a few things to highlight. Let's see, I did want to point out that the, the property tax levies that were adopted for 23, 24 were lower than the budget amount that was actually introduced initially in the proposed budget, that was a balanced budget. The budget that was adopted was out of balance to spend down the fund balance. It was amended to spend the fund balance down lower. That's what's continuing now for 25, 26. We do have a $6 million revenue stabilization policy that is set by policy at 6 million. The remaining amount that makes up that 2.5 months of operating reserve remains in the general fund. We don't transfer it over to the revenue stabilization, but they both roll up for that calculation. We include them both. Our fines and forfeitures are going up over 7 million. That does not include that $25 fee that goes into the Police Department Criminal Justice Fund and is being transferred back to the general fund for 1.625 million a year to fund those 10 positions. The CJC debt service, we did issue initially about 69 million. What's remaining from 2025 until we pay it off is about 55.9 in principal. The rec center, we have about 15 million of principal remaining. I don't know how many police vacancies there are, but we are anticipating they will underspend their budget for 23, 24 by a little over $2 million. And that is somewhat offset by the CRC, or CJC revenues for contracted bed space that did not come in for 23, 24 as initially budget. And the debt service, none of that is for the Community Recovery Center. That was all grant-funded. I think, those are the things I wrote down. Anything else that council wanted me to cover that I didn't answer?
Does any member of the council have a question to clarify information provided during the hearing? I think they're all questioned out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Heikel, if you would like to come to the microphone, please do. I'm trying to get through our agenda this evening, and it's running very long.
Well, I apologize for that.
And you did already speak during public comment, and you already spoke during the hearing, so please, what other questions do you have?
I don't have questions, I have comments. Number one, there was a meeting in this room about two weeks ago that I attended to talk about the budget. There were exactly five of us citizens. There were more than 10 members of the staff here at that time. The, I'm sorry, I don't have my material here, but the, the budget summary that you were given, that was not given tonight, but which you have in your packet, talks about 194 people who have given you input for this process. Of those people, only 100 actually own a home here in Linwood. No problem with people who don't, but the people who are going to pay that tax on their home are represented by those 100 people. The less than 200 people that responded to that survey, they represent less than one-half of 1% of the people who live in Linwood. And the property owners represent less than 3/10 of 1%, probably more like 2/10 of 1% of all the people who live in Linwood. So the information that survey gave you as to what people think and know about Linwood is so limited, I would suggest to you that its value is almost nil. This is the kind of non-information that is now fed into the council to make this decision, and this is a multi-multi-million-dollar decision. the council to make this decision, and this is a multi-multi-million dollar decision. Don't take it lightly. And don't try to keep people from stepping up and saying, there are problems, and you, council, by your holding office, have to come up with the answers. We who speak to you only give you suggestions of our feelings and of what we see, but you are held responsible by the citizens. And especially, you will feel that when the people who don't engage you come up and tell you, you've done a bad job. Hopefully, they'll say you all do a good job, but this is a job that's going to take you a long time, and a very short time is left on the calendar to make those decisions. Thank you.
At this time, since all those wishing to, Mr. Moore?
Just want to politely remind the council that even though the staff is giving you all these recommendations, like this planner, or the, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, she admitted that-
She's the financial director.
Yeah, the financial, finance director just told you that this is the council's budget. The mayor and the staff proposed these things to you. These are their suggestions, their expertise that they're giving you, but ultimately, it is your decision and your responsibility to be held accountable to the people. So thank you.
Is there anyone else that needs to speak this evening? Ms. Lunsford? Oh, I'm going to cherish those. All right. At this time, since all those wishing to speak have had an opportunity to do so, and since the city council has had the opportunity to ask clarifying questions, it is appropriate to close the public hearing. Thank you for joining us and participating in the public hearing. And I will say that we are taking a break.